Seven o'clock, the meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Lesbrunt, Cascade Township Supervisor. Is there a motion to appoint a temporary clerk in Clerk Slater's absence?
I make a motion to appoint Tom McDonald as a temporary clerk.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion to appoint trustee McDonald as the temporary clerk for tonight's meeting, supported by trustee Shipley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Please rise, or I'm sorry. Trustee McDonald, please call the roll.
Sure. Trustee Shipley?
Present.
Trustee Kessel?
Here.
Trustee Norduk?
Here.
Clerk Slater, excused. Supervisor Lesbrunt?
Here.
Treasurer Corstange?
Yeah.
Trustee McDonald, here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I could make a note before the next Article Three. The numbers are misnumbered, starting with, just from my own records, starting with Article Eight. It should start with zero three seven. And then Article Nine will start with zero three eight and go on in order. So I don't know how you guys want to do that.
Noted, thank you. We'll just go as we proceed. Article Three is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda is just corrected.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no presentations this evening, it is now time for public comments. Anything on tonight's agenda not scheduled for a public hearing? You're welcome to speak up, three minutes, and state your name and address for our record keeping. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Richardson. I live at thirty-four thirty-eight North Applecrest Court. And I've been a resident of the township for twenty years and eight months. I'm here tonight to comment on the agenda item about the Township Manager Search Committee. If my research is correct, Cascade has had three township managers over the last thirty-six years. That's a very strong record of stability and performance from the managers. The recent activities of the board, including the addition of this agenda item as an amendment rather than the original agenda, does tend to raise some doubts in me about whether the board will be able to extend this record of stability and performance. One, one policy of the township is to encourage public participation in important decisions of the township. I'm adding significant items to an agenda as amendments doesn't seem consistent with encouragement. It seems more discouraging to me. Further, this is the second time in a month that an important decision was added to an agenda after it was first published. The vote to choose a new township treasurer was added to the agenda after it was first published as an amendment. The timing of that addition appeared, I'm not saying it was, but appearance matters in these issues, and the appearance appeared designed to hold the meeting when one member was out of town so that one faction of the board would have a majority of those present. If you're trying to avoid participation of either of other board members, it's hard to believe that you want participation from community members. I encourage you to work together as a board, as a complete board, to reach a consensus decision on a new manager, not a choice of a committee of one faction. And I encourage you to follow the township policy of encouraging public participation in this important decision. Also, I can't say enough, we've heard a lot about transparency in the last two years at board meetings. I encourage you to conduct this search and decision with the highest possible transparency that you're able to do.
Thank you, sir. Just for the record, it was the notice of the super, or the manager resigning was Friday. Our agenda comes out on Friday, so that was the reason for the late amendment.
And? We have a member missing all month, plus we had a member missing earlier, so.
So it doesn't change, it wasn't, nothing, the same amount of voters on the board would have been there, had the meeting, it was just that trustee McDonald wasn't there, circus, then Clerk Slater was, same amount, so it wasn't done. And if, we encourage you to pay attention, and you can see the process for yourself. But thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Speaking of treasurer candidates, welcome, sir.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good evening, everyone. Maury Fernandez, Cascade Lakes Circle. Two matters. If you were not aware of, we have racing going on on Cascade Road. And it's happening with motorcycles early morning, it's going with vehicles with loud mufflers, and so, and I know that the Sheriff's Department and Police Department can gauge certain activities, but it's happening early morning, late at night. Why? Because I can hear it. And so I haven't observed it. And so the other matter is, is that the speed limits on Cascade Road are, nobody drives fifty-five miles per hour, except maybe I do. Everybody's going ten, fifteen miles per hour above the speed limit. Not telling you your jobs, what I am suggesting, though, is of course getting together with the Sheriff's Department and maybe allocating some time to deputies, or maybe even doing off-hours, paying for this, because we've had issues, and I won't get into it, we've even had deaths on Cascade Road, you're very familiar with. We don't need that, please. So I bring this for your awareness. Second thing is, my community, Cascade Lakes, we try to maintain a great appearance, and I represent the board when I'm speaking now. There's one stop sign. It is old, we've tried cleaning it, we've tried washing it. We called to say, can you please take a look at this to maybe try to replace it? We've tried everything short of painting it. We were told that unless it's broken, this is a metal stop sign, not saying, for example, do not throw garbage, which is very important, but it's a safety sign. If you don't stop because of the way our entrance is built, you can have a vehicle hitting you easily.
This is as you exit Cascade Lakes?
As you exit. And so our response was, I don't have the name of the person, you're gonna please excuse me, I'm lacking that information, was, well, it has to be broken. I would suggest we're better than that. We want to give people, whether you're moving, you're living here, or moving in for the first time, that we care about what the township looks like. And appearances do matter. And so I would parallel this to, let's say, a playground. Do you need the playground to break down before you actually make changes? No. And so I'm just requesting on behalf of our community, that a new stop sign, or maybe you try painting it, someone from your staff, not yourself, someone from your staff or department can do that. And I, I'm, let's just say that it's just not for our betterment, it's also a safety matter. And that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sir, is your neighborhood road in Cascade Lakes, may, do you have it, is it maintained by the road commission, is it public, or do you have to have it privately plowed during the year?
We, we have it privately plowed, yet the sign is on the road itself. So basically, the township, it's under the township's responsibility, not our, if it was ours, sorry about that, we would have, if it was ours, we would have replaced ourselves. In fact, we've replaced all the signs within our community, one for appearances, value, and of course, to make sure people understand they're supposed to stop and/or not exceed a certain speed limit. But that sign belongs to the township.
Road Commission, Manager Swayze, can you reach out to the Road Commission to ask about the stop sign?
I can certainly, I'll send the email first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other public comments, virtually or in person?
If anyone virtually would like to speak during this public comment section about anything on the agenda, please raise your hand.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. My name is Bobak Shapadaklo. I'm the owner of Backyard Restaurant, five, do I need to announce the address as well? Yeah, five zero seven zero twenty-eight Street, Southeast Grand Rapids, Michigan, four nine five one two. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for allowing me to opportunity to speak today. My name is Bobak, I'm the owner of Backyard Restaurant. Our family has been part of the Cascade area since nineteen ninety-eight, actively participating in local events and supporting other businesses in our region. I stand before you today to discuss the urgent need for a liquor license for our restaurant. As you know, Grand Rapids is known as the beer city. Michiganders love their beer and wine for nearly a year. I've been working towards obtaining this license. Unfortunately, our inability to serve beer and wine has significantly impacted our business. Every day, customers walk in, they sit down, only to leave upon discovering that they don't offer, that we don't offer these beverages, excuse me. Our unique cuisine featuring a variety of grilled meat, chicken, filet, lamb, is one of a kind, and the only Persian restaurant in the west, central, and northern Michigan area. As you know, food, especially meat, is paired with beer and wine, a fact our patrons appreciate. While obtaining a license be challenging, it would lead to adverse consequences, making it difficult for our business to thrive in the, in the long run. We understand that some businesses obtaining a Class C license with the intent of reselling it for profit, however, as deeply committed member of the community, I assure you that our intentions are solely to benefit the business and the area. God forbid, if we were to close, we were to return the license to the township, ensuring that the valuable resource remains within the locale. I kindly request that consider our longstanding commitment to the Cascade area, our unique cuisine, and the challenges we face without a liquor license. Granting us the license will not only help our family-owned business, but also contribute to our overall vibrancy and success of our beloved region, keeping the spirit of the beer city alive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. In this item, or your comments, I believe are, are related to one of the first items on tonight's agenda, so I think Manager Swayze will have some background that hopefully is relevant or should be relevant to your.
Okay. I've worked with a couple of people in the office, they've been very helpful, and I heard about this, so I said, let me run here and.
No, thank you, it's, it's helpful.
Thank you.
That concludes the first session of public comments. Article Six, approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
It's a motion by, it's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by Treasurer Corstange, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article Seven, financial actions. Motion or discussion?
Motion made to consider approval of the March payables, payroll, and transfers.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by Treasurer Corstange, to approve the financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Unfinished business. Item zero three seven, twenty twenty-three, consider approval of the airport settlement. As this board and many others in the community are aware, this has been an extended process. We appear to have reached a settlement that addresses the needs of our residents, community, and is in everyone's best interest. Attorney Van Essen is here tonight with us, and will provide an overview of the settlement. We also have attorney Homier joining later from our general counsel, Foster Swift. So this is a major step forward, and I want to thank our attorneys and all the others who have moved this forward. Attorney Van Essen, welcome, and please.
Thank you.
Walk us through it.
Good evening. As a technical matter, last, the last meeting, the trustees approved a draft settlement agreement, conditioned on a quick response by the airport. And final approval of any language changes by both myself, as well as Foster Swift as general counsel, and we also worked with the supervisor in that process. Ben and I then undertook the effort of presenting the agreement to the airport, and Ben put together the exhibits to the agreement. And I'm happy to report that the airport had very few changes, none really that were material, they were really grammatical changes, making sure we had the right parties identified, and we had a little greater clarity in their opinion to some of the items that we had drafted. We reviewed those changes with the supervisor and with Foster Swift, and I'm pleased to report that we've let the airport know that those entities had approved it, it's been executed by the airport, approved by its board, and signed, and trustee, I'm sorry, superintendent Lesbrunt signed it at the beginning of the meeting, consistent with the directions of the board at la, at the last meeting. I would like to think on a broader level, this is how we solve problems in West Michigan. Obviously, in the Trout Creek area, we had the unpleasant discovery of contamination. Township moved quickly to create a committee to try to research the origins and potential solutions. You advanced as a township, engineering costs, so that we could take a look at how to best extend municipal water to the area. You stepped forward into a vacuum and made sure that there is bottled water, safe drinking water sources for the affected residents, including bottled water, and whole house filters. Eventually, our partner, Grand Rapids, stepped forward with more complete engineering proposals, started looking for additional funding from grants from the state. The airport did participate in those efforts, and so we formulated a funding mechanism that removes this from the residents of Cascade Township, both the broader residents already in the system, as well as those in the Trout Creek neighborhood affected by this. Eventually, the county stepped forward with some ARPA funding, which is greatly appreciated. And in the final analysis, the airport has stepped forward and it's done the community responsible thing. They are reimbursing the township for the bottled water cost, the whole house filter cost now and through the end of the project, you're getting our engineering advancement reimbursed, so your general fund is, is going to be covered. And we didn't forget about our residents that did the prudent thing when the problem first surfaced and hooked up voluntarily. We've got a reimbursement package that will be coming to them upon proper application and demonstration of their, their costs. The costs ended up being a little more expensive than we thought at the last meeting, and yet the airport has been patient with us and has agreed to cover those costs. One of the interesting, and I think innovative, aspects of the agreement, which also heartened the community, is that it isn't a final resolution. It's rare not to have a settlement agreement where there isn't a complete release, and there's a freezing of responsibilities and liabilities at the point in time that everyone has signed it. We have uncertainties here. We're not sure all these grants are gonna come through, we're not sure that we won't have costs, extra costs in this strange environment in which the construction will be unfolding over the next two years. And so we have not waived and released our potential claims in the event that the funding which we expect will come through and will be sufficient is insufficient. We've reserved our right to protect the community's interests in that event, and the airports agreed to that. Again, normally, you don't have parties agreeing to pay, in this case, up to over a half a million dollars without a complete release, but they've recognized the uncertainties of the situation, and they've agreed to toll our, our claims so that we don't have to worry about time pressure to sue prematurely before some of those contingencies or costs might be incurred. So I think it's a, it's a responsible win-win for all the parties concerned. It really should have laid Grand Rapids' concern that we have a funding mechanism, it reimburses the township residents, and it reimburses the township, and we reserve the right to revisit things in case we get some unexpected curveballs over the next two or three years. So I'm very proud of everyone's efforts in doing this, and I, again, want to thank Grand Rapids, I want to thank the county for coming up with the ARPA funding, and ultimately the airport for not over-lawyering our document and providing the funding that is necessary to have a healthy budget as we go forward with our reimbursement. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have. Otherwise, I'll proudly communicate to the airport that we've signed it, and we can move forward in getting our reimbursement, moving on to other projects. All right?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Swayze?
I would just note that there was communication at the beginning of the month, sent out to all of the residents that we identified that potentially hooked up early because of PFAS, so their information is slowly rolling through. We gave them until April twenty-eighth to be able to apply, and of course, just like I would, they're coming in kind of at the last minute, and I expect to get a lot in the next couple of days as well. But I will put those together and review them with Doug next week, just to make sure that that process continues and we get those residents reimbursed as soon as possible.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your hard work.
Make a motion that we approve the settlement agreement.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the final settlement agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article Nine, new business. Zero three eight, twenty twenty-three. Before we move into public hearing on the amendments to the Township Liquor License Ordinance, Manager Swayze, can you give us a, us and as well as the public, a brief overview?
I will, thank you. So the State of Michigan Liquor Control Commission is the Michigan agency responsible for the regulation in sale of alcoholic beverages in the state. They accomplish this through an array of liquor licenses that are available for a specific business model the applicant is seeking. Certain licenses, primarily those that involve the consumption of alcohol on-premise, require local legislative approval before the Liquor Control Commission will consider issuing a permit. Others require the opinion of the local legislative body to be considered prior to issuance. And in your packet, I did put a chart that details the approval requirements for each type of license. So the most popular type of license for onsite consumption of alcohol is referred to as a Class C license. This license allows a restaurant or bar to sell or serve beer, wine, mixed spirit drink, and spirits to consumers. They can be issued as a quota license, a resort license, an RDA, a DDA, or a special act license. And local legislative approval is required for new previously unissued license, but not necessarily required to transfer ownership or location of an existing license. So each municipality in Michigan is assigned a quota of Class C licenses based on a formula for one license for every fifteen hundred residents. And based on the two thousand and twenty census, the township was recently allocated an additional Class C license. So Class C licenses are commoditized at the state level. Once an entity has successfully secured a Class C license, they are able to sell that license to another entity through an escrow process. The license can also be transferred to another municipality that is in a county that abuts the county the license originated in. Because of this commoditization and scarcity, licenses that sell from one entity to another can fetch upwards of seventy-five thousand dollars on the open market. So in an attempt to ensure that quota licenses remain in their communities, several local municipalities have instituted a requirement that the applicant for the license enter into an agreement with the municipality whereby if the business ceases to operate, the license will be returned to the state rather than sold or transferred to another entity. This ensures that the license will remain available to the township for future applicants to apply for, rather than being transferred for profit outside of the township. So by amending our current liquor license ordinance to include the required agreement to return the license to the state if it's no longer being used, we can ensure other current or future township entities will have the ability to apply for those coveted Class C licenses or any other quota licenses of the township. If an amendment is adopted by the township, staff and legal counsel will amend our current application, actually, already have amended our current application, to solicit, solicit applications for the currently available Class C license, as we know there are people in the community that are interested in applying for it. So we do have a public hearing, hearing scheduled for this item tonight. After the public hearing is held, the board can choose to amend the liquor license ordinance at tonight's meeting or any meeting in the future. We'll note that the repeal or amendment of the liquor license ordinance itself comes with just minimal cost to the township, primarily staff time, printing, and publishing. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
What is the application process?
So there is a, the other part of our ordinance is in the packet, there's a host of information you have to give us, basically based on the organization, your organization, your financial acumen. You can't qualify for a liquor license if you have a felony, you know, those types of things. So all of those will be put together. For this particular instance, we'll actually put out a call for those. We'll give entities two to three weeks to apply, and then those will all come back to the township board, and the township board will have to make a decision which entity they want to support for, for that license. Again, local approval is required, so the state will only consider processing the application for the entity that the township has approved the resolution support.
And these are for new Class C licenses that are issued based on the population increase?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you know how many previous licenses we've had that have transferred out of the township?
So that's, it's hard to track because they transfer in, they transfer out. You know, you can start with the, the number, basically take our population divided by, you know, fifteen hundred, and we get one license for every part thereof. You'll find that we currently have more licenses in the township that we were allocated, so there's been a net transfer in of licenses to the township.
Thank you, I was just curious.
I've got a question, Ben. I think the last time I remember transferring a license, or either we had a new one to give out, we had a request from, what was the old Carlos O'Kelly's, and now it's a Japanese-Chinese restaurant? And we had an applicant, we had his real estate agent here arguing on behalf of why he should get it, and we, I didn't see anything in the amendments to the requirements that give preferential treatment? Or do we want preferential treatment to somebody who's been operating in a township for an extended period of time, as opposed to giving it to somebody who wants to come in and start a new restaurant?
My suggestion would be, while I, I certainly agree that that's something the board should consider, I wouldn't recommend it be memorialized in the ordinance itself. That then gives the board the opportunity to consider that, right? So as a board, that may be important to you for this round. However, at some point in the future, there may be a, a board or a reason to decide that, no, we would rather attract a new business into the township or something. So by not memorializing in the ordinance, it gives the board the biggest flexibility to determine who they want to recommend for.
I know we struggled with it the last time we awarded it, what to do.
So I, I will say, you obviously made a good decision, because that entity is still operating in the township now, so you obviously chose well that time around.
There may be certain local, there may be certain, I don't know, hotel, bar, restaurants that have been here already, but we may not think it's a good idea to, it's a good idea to not codify that.
Move it going to public hearing?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to enter public hearing on this item. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, we're in public hearing, so now's the time where we would welcome any comments on this issue from anyone in the community.
My name is Abby Shapadaklo, I'm Bobak's mom, and we have been in Cascades since nineteen eighty-eight, and we live locally, we're around here all the time. We spend our money here, and I wish you would all consider that someone that's from here has been in the business for thirty-five years. You would give us the license, because as my son said, if, God forbid, the business doesn't, because the way it's going, it truly, I don't think it's gonna, it's gonna go anywhere. Customers come in, they sit down, and they get up and they leave, because there's no beer and wine. And we're already, as probably most of you know, have issues with employment. There's not enough employees, so we're only open four or five hours, and we're trying to open up for lunchtime also. So, and then on top of it, when people come in in that four or five hours, and there's no beer and wine, a party of five and six, they leave. Every night, we get calls, did you get your beer and wine license? Did you get beer, beer and wine license? So we're hoping, because we're a member of this community, that you would give us that chance to have that beer and wine, and we promise that if somehow, some way, we are not able to continue, we would give it back to this, to the, to the Cascade Township. We don't have any plans of selling or doing anything with it, we just want to exist. to the to the Cascade Township. We don't have any plans of selling or doing anything with it. We just want to exist. That's really all we are. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this issue?
I didn't expect it, but I vote. So so I love hearing the story of someone who lives in our community and is trying to build a business. That's that's America. That's my grandparents forty years ago in the United States. So I love this story. So if we're going to, first of all, but but the first thing I would ask is, do we have metrics to basically identify, for example, new business, which is incredibly important. We need to incentivize new business coming in versus businesses that are already here with licenses. Because you have to also understand what the data is and the metrics. And again, I don't know what you folks know. Have we been able to establish that, number one? Because we also have to be reasonable. We don't want to overwhelm our community every corner with liquor, right? It's not good. But at the same time, have a measured and rational, I would suggest, rational approach. And so when I'm listening to a family that's been here so long, it's working hard, I can't help but say, yeah, we we and and this is the biggest litmus test for me anyway. Because we have to ensure that there's due diligence, as you mentioned earlier, right? That there's nothing egregious in the background, et cetera, of the personnel. But if they've proven themselves, they've been here in the community, good citizens are trying to, in a in a great capitalistic way, make money, earn money. Well, let's support them, especially if they've proven themselves, is what I would suggest. And so, but I would go back to data, metrics, to see exactly where is that balance of licenses leaving the area versus coming in? Because I think that's the starting point to understanding and then developing good governance and processes as to what a balance as to how, in fact, in Cascade at least, we should look at this. It's just a suggestion, and I gave some personal thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online?
If anyone of our Zoom participants would like to participate in this public hearing, please raise your hand.
Back to you. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion made to close the public hearing and return to the meeting.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now back in open session. Part B, consideration, the board's consideration of amendments to the township liquor license ordinance. Motion or discussion?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the amendment to the township liquor license as explained and as written.
Support.
It's a motion, and then discussion. I just had a question, manager Swayze. What is the timeframe? The required process internally? You know, you mentioned two weeks approximately waiting, you know, application process, but what can people expect?
Yeah, yep. So my hope is to turn around and put the information out the first week in May to give people two to three-ish weeks to reply. And my hope is that we'll have the applicants in front of the township board at the second meeting in May.
So that would be the third week in May, Wednesday night at seven o'clock?
Fourth.
Fourth. Thank you. What about two? Is there a requirement? Must the business that applies already be opened? Or could it be a an entity that has like a business plan but hasn't yet opened? Is that just?
Yeah, so there's no requirement that they would have a business currently open. So I imagine if people catch word, again, a quota license at the state level in a community like Cascade browses a lot of attention. So I would imagine that we will probably see an applicant or two that comes with a business plan rather than a open business.
Mr. Shipley.
Comment. My opinion, I think that somebody that has opened a business in the township is struggling to serve the residents successfully. In my opinion, would take precedence over somebody that says, I want to do it in the future. I am done.
So that was a motion by, was that trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the proposed amendments to the township liquor license ordinance. All in favor, or excuse me, trustee McDonald, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee Norduk.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, excuse. Supervisor Lespence.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald, yes.
Motion carried. So the issue hopefully should be on the board or on the board's agenda the last week in May, and very much appreciate the public comments tonight. Thank you. Item zero three nine, twenty twenty-three, part A. This would be a public hearing on the proposed amendment to the township fire alarm and false alarm ordinance. Manager Swayze, could you give us a brief overview, please?
Great, thank you. So we currently have a fire alarms ordinance. It was originally adopted in two thousand and ten, and the purpose of the ordinance is to facilitate the reduction of fire alarms and the misuse of manpower and resources of the fire department caused by the dispatch of units to the scene of a false alarm. One shortcoming of the ordinance as it's currently written is that it narrowly defines an alarm system as a fire alarm. Recently, we've had issues with responses to other types of alarms, primarily medical alert alarms in our senior living complexes. There have been instances when our department has responded to multiple false alarm calls in a day because of the company's failure to fix the alarm. So the attached ordinance amendment was drafted by legal counsel to help remedy the situation. And among the changes, it broadens the definition of alarm system to include more than just traditional firearms. It broadens the definition of a false alarm. It updates the fine structure and payment process and has an additional, an addition of an appeal process. So by amending the current alarm ordinance, the township will be better positioned to recover costs associated with repeated false alarms within the township. Progressive enforcement and fines will allow the township to continue our typical compliance enforcement model where we utilize the ordinance and penalties to compel compliance with the ordinance rather than immediate fines. But the ordinance also has enough teeth to recover significant costs should the need arise. As required, this item is scheduled for a public hearing tonight. After the public hearing is held, the township board can choose to amend the fire slash false alarm ordinance at this meeting or any future meeting. So again, the repeal or amendment of the ordinance with itself comes with minimal costs, including our staff time printing and publishing. But the amendment of the ordinance will allow the township to recover the significant costs associated with responding to multiple false alarms at an individual address. And with that, I'm happy to answer your question.
Thank you. Treasurer Corstange.
Do other close by municipalities have a similar ordinance in place?
I think a lot of them have a similar ordinance to the alarm ordinance. Now, there are some communities that go even further, right? So there's some local communities that collect money for any type of emergency response. So this doesn't go quite this far. But these types of alarm ordinances are pretty common.
That include both fire and medical.
Yeah, yep.
Trustee Norduk.
Which communities collect for any response?
I know Kentwood does. They had the most robust program I know of. I know Grand Rapids and Wyoming also have programs. I'm not quite as familiar with theirs as I am with Kentwoods. But yeah, Kentwood would be the the one that I'm I'm most familiar with.
Does it include the the option of discretion, of exercising discretion at the township level, or is it a mandatory?
So this ours has the discretion built into it. I don't know, I don't know enough about the teeth in the Kentwood ordinance to review that. But that's certainly information that we could collect if you're interested in knowing more about it.
This seems like the smart route to go. Trustee Shipley.
These ordinances have been around for literally decades of one form or another and one intensity or another. This ordinance, as I read it, takes out some of the negative issues of having a ordinance like this. The original ones were pretty black and white. If you had a false alarm after the third false alarm, you paid a bill. And those ordinances said that the property owner paid the bill. Well, guess what? Now the alarm companies would call the property owner in the middle of the night, and he or she would say, hey, I don't send them. I'll go check it out. And they'd have well-involved problem. So this ordinance as written by the legal counsel and amended eliminates a lot of those negative aspects of a penalty ordinance. And I can tell you also that this township's fire department has in the past been on false alarms and had real alarms coming at the same time. Slows the response and the manpower to that real alarm. That's all.
Move it going to public hearing.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by treasurer Corstange, to enter public hearing on the amendment to the township fire alarm and false alarm ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now in public hearing. Now's the time for anyone to comment on this, whether in person or virtually.
You're gonna have to have me again.
Might as well take advantage of it.
This is dear to my heart, okay? Two things. Public safety, like trustee Shipley mentioned, should not be going out there on success successive false alarms when real emergency exists. At the same time, we have seniors who may need help, right? So I would suggest the following, and I support completely what trustee Shipley mentioned, but also these companies that I don't know what these companies are, but I've dealt with them in the past through contracts and corporate America. The fact is, is that you can negotiate with them. You have an attorney. You basically tell them that, in fact, they A must bear some responsibility to this, especially if the seniors are impacted. And so you have to create a reasonable approach to this where some of the responsibility they do bear and not put the burden on the fire department. That's all.
Thank you. Chairman Selkma, welcome.
Hello. My only question is, who's in charge of this and or who's going to keep track of it? I know from personal experience with the dumpsters behind the folding warehouse and the other people here that keep coming back and every every township meeting regarding the landscaping company. There just never really seems to be people wanting to issue tickets or fines. So who's in charge of it and who's going to keep track of, you know? Bill Smith has his fire alarm go off today or or his medical alert alarm. And then, you know, two weeks later, it caps us again. And, you know, five months down the road, then it happens. You know, there's that just that continuity of who's keeping track of this details. That's, I didn't see that in the ordinance. So I don't know if you guys, if that would be the zoning administrator or the fire chief or or whoever. So but just something to.
Manager Swayze or trustee Shipley, can you guys address that?
Yeah, the fire department will be in charge of that. So the standard operating procedure and their administrative person will more than likely be responsible for tracking it with input from the firefighters that are going on the false calls and then making sure the billings being sent out appropriately.
Okay.
One other thing, by state law, the fire marshal is allocated the responsibility and authority to do that. And we do have a full-time fire marshal in the township.
Okay, I mean, and I'm assuming the fire department also goes on all ambulance or paramedic calls as well, too?
If the, under the state guidelines, it's a first responder system. And in most cases, like ninety-nine point five percent, the local fire department is the first or closest responder.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone on our, if any one of our Zoom participants would like to participate in this public hearing, please raise your hand.
Is there a motion or further discussion?
I think the motion to close public hearing.
Support.
It's a motion by treasurer Corstange, supported by trustee McDonald, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now back in regular session. Part B, adoption of the amendment to the township fire alarm ordinance. Motion or discussion?
Shipley makes a motion to adopt amendment as written.
Support. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Corstange, to adopt the amendment to the township fire alarm and false alarm ordinance as written. Treasurer McDonald, please call the roll.
Trustee Norduk.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Supervisor Lespence.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald, yes.
Motion carried. Item zero four zero, twenty twenty-three. The appointment of the township economic development director for board approval. It's my understanding that discussions with the applicant are not yet complete. So at this time, I recommend that we carry this item forward to our next meeting. So it doesn't require board action. Item zero four one, twenty twenty-three. The downtown development authorities' willingness to financially support the library outdoors garden and activity space. And I see that we also have the designer and also the library representing us tonight. If you'd like to come up and be available for questions, that'd be great. The plans to upgrade this outdoor area surrounding the library were previously approved by the board. Construction was tentatively scheduled for later this year. And the project includes outdoor gardens with native landscaping, some walking paths and benches, possibly a pavilion, and then different activity spaces for all ages. The project was initiated by the friends of the library and also as a way to give back and use all of their proceeds from the sales, from their book sales here in Cascade. So they saved up for a long time, more than what we would anticipate from annual book sales and generously donated that would cover, the generous donation would cover the first phase, but then there was potential to go further with the project. And then this would have to do with the downtown development authorities' willingness to financially support that. So exciting questions, comments? Critiques?
They did, they did, Grace. The DDA supported it?
Yes.
Okay.
Last week, on Tuesday, so during all of these conversations, first, thank you. My name is Lulu Brown. I am the manager of the Cascade Library. This has been a project that's just near and dear to my heart. One of the things when it was approved, the last time we were at the township board talking about this project was we had the funding for phase one. One of my commitments was to continue that partnership with the DDA. I had already had some meetings scheduled to go back to them since they had expressed interest last year in supporting the project financially. We met with them last month, but they didn't have a forum. So we went back last week and they decided to not only support phase two of the project, but to support all the phases of the project, but also to kind of create a wow moment for residents. They wanted to make sure that the space we were creating, we were able to do good things with the lighting, making sure that it was a space that kind of embodied the spirit of what Cascade was, but that the design was also timeless. And it was something that would live beyond what we're creating right now. So we did come back today to ask that you consider their support, knowing that construction costs continue to rise and that we're able to save a bit by actually doing all phases of the project. Wes has done a lot of work with leveraging some of his partnerships with local construction companies also to get really close estimates to make sure that the budget that we're presenting is a lot closer to what might be realistic once the project goes out to bid. And then it comes back to the township for your final approval. Wes, would you like to talk about anything that has changed recently with the project?
Sure. Yeah, so when the first phase was approved a few months back, we we started working on the design. The consistent feedback that we got from the board and other product stakeholders was not just outdoor space at the library, but community hub. That's what we kept hearing, community hub, a gathering place. So that's kind of how the design evolved. We had the site surveyed and based on the survey and where exact locations of trees and and certain features in the topography and and access points. The site, the site plan changed a little bit from the master plan that was developed, which naturally happens when you go from higher level to then getting into more detail. And when we got into that, we knew that the plan was going a little bit beyond maybe what the original scope of the project was. We we were able to keep within the the bounds of the funding we had in sort of a value engineered plan. But we didn't want to scale that back just to stay within a certain budget that was forecasted based on the master plan. Because we knew that the DDA had had seen the project, was interested in supporting it. And so that's what we did last week is we wanted to say, this is this is kind of the vision based on the evolution of the plan and the feedback that we have gotten from the different stakeholders. And we were very pleased that they decided to to fund that plan. And one thing we wanted to make clear in that presentation was we're just incredibly grateful for the support that we've gotten from the township and from the friends of the library. And had they not supported the the additional phase one scope, it's not like the project wouldn't have happened. We had a kind of a scaled back version that was more reflective of the original plan that we could have rolled right forward with. But due to the fact that doing But, um, due to the fact that doing multiple phases at once is gonna save money on reduced mobilizations and other um, types of redundancies in the greater scope of the project. Um, they wanted to support that plan, which we're very excited about. Um, and as Lulu mentioned, you know, construction costs are going up left and sideways. And so we've been talking with contractors that, that I work with and saying, you know, luckily, we have these relationships, like I say, we're putting this out to bid, but if you would be able to take a look at what we've got, let us know if we're in the right ballpark or if we should change things a little bit. And so we have what we think are very accurate and, um, you know, even potentially slightly conservative ballpark budget numbers so that we can move forward, knowing that we're, we're gonna be able to get competitive bids for the site and, and the funding that we've been, um, you know, potentially, uh, approved for, will be able to cover the, um, you know, exciting changes to the outdoor space, so.
I haven't seen the phase two, phase three. You said there's some changes and it scopes creeped a little bit.
So it was mainly in relation to phase one, actually, just in terms of, um, wanting. So originally, the, the, some of the sidewalks and the paths were a little bit narrower, you know, five feet-ish. Um, once we were getting that feedback of community hub and realizing that this is a space that would likely have to accommodate larger um, crowds of people during peak times, especially, um, you know, Fourth of July periods or when there's larger events out in the, in the field. Um, and, you know, just larger activities taking, taking place. Um, we expanded the sidewalks to seven feet wide and that also just happens to be the width they need to be to be maintained by snow plows and, and things like that. Um, but we, we, so we widened some paths, we made some of the areas, um, you know, slightly bigger to be, be able to accommodate different crowds. You know, more benches just in general, so that, you know, when there is a large crowd, there's not, you know, forty people fighting over six benches, those types of things. So that, that was a little bit of the, you know, kind of increase in scale of the site. And so some of the value engineering plan went with, you know, reducing paths and, and just having the option of those not being plowed or accessible during the winter months, um, you know, eliminating benches, um, changing materials and things like that, so that we could still execute that plan and sort of shrink it down to the original, um, scope. So the, the expanded scope was to accommodate more of the, the, the community hub type of feel, which was consistent with the feedback that we were getting during the project.
Thank you.
There is a cost in here for the pavilion. Do you have a? I don't, I don't see on our drawings where there's a good depiction of what the pavilion would look like, but you're anticipating doing that too?
Yes, and we don't have a good depiction of what that would really look like, to be, to be honest, right now. We have some good examples, which what we're used to, um, find those costs out. Um, so it kind of a nicer pavilion slash band shell of a similar size to what's shown on the plan was what we used. Um, from a manufacturer to get the material pricing and then we shared that with our contractors to get installation pricing. And we also know that some of our local contractors have said they work with builders who could, who could do a, a custom, um, a pavilion for even potentially, you know, I don't wanna go and say, oh, well cheaper, but they said potentially cheaper, um, than, than the kind of prefabricated ones. And that's gonna be an item that we're gonna work with the DDA on and other, um, uh, our project stakeholders to really dial in the vision for what that feature looks like. Because when it comes to the pavilion band shell, there's a, a lot of different styles and, and things that that they can end up looking like. Um, so we wanna make sure it's a really nice, um, attractive feature that's right sized for that space. Um, to be able to accommodate everyday gatherings and larger, um, events and things like that.
I see the, uh, pavilion is a sixty foot or recommended to be sixty foot. How many people could utilize that pavilion at one time?
Um, I, I guess I can't say a hundred percent. They probably have a maximum capacity of things in their, in their, um, in their sort of, uh, fine print. Um, sixty feet is probably on the larger end of, of what that feature will be like, but we wanted to price it out larger. Um, and would rather scale back. Um, but you could, I mean, you could accommodate, you know, quite a few people depending on the layout. Now that could be sixty feet at the wider point that tapers down. Um, or if it's circular, then obviously that's, that's quite a few people you can fit in, in that type of a space. So we're picturing it having seating that can accommodate small groups during everyday use. And then, you know, a flexible space to be able to be reorganized, say if there's, um, you know, concerts in the park or, or things of that nature, so.
You're new here, you're young. I'm gonna give you three points that you should consider.
Okay.
That has been brought before this board in the past couple of years. Number one, if you build this so large that you have literally dozens or hundreds of cars coming, where are you gonna put them? And do not tell me that you got an agreement across the street with Johnny Nodles. Because that's infringing on private property. Number two, I haven't seen anywhere yet where you have included the estimated maintenance costs, annual maintenance costs for this development.
We have, um, in the, in the updated budgets, we have maintenance costs for the, for the gardens and things.
Alright.
That was one of the things that I appreciate your feedback too, the last time we came before you with this project. So I've been talking with, um, Jim, who's the head of building and grounds. We've been working more closely with the parks committee too, to figure out a long-term plan of, and they're really excited to have ongoing programs to try to leverage volunteers as well. I've also spoke with the friends to say, I might need to put your money where your mouth is when it comes to some of the.
There's no might about it.
Yeah.
Okay. Number three is that this band shell or concert shell has come before the board before?
No, it hasn't. It was an amphitheater that kept coming up.
Amphitheater.
And that's, and that got snuck back in.
Yeah.
And it's out.
So you wanna be careful about what you're presenting to this board and to the residents of this township. A bean is a bean, a tomato is a tomato, and don't mix the two up, okay? And, uh, when you're thinking about additional maintenance costs, Jim is, he's, he's a great supervisor, okay? But I would expect that as our parks department or spaces like this continue to expand in the township, Jim's gonna be coming, knocking on the door saying, I need two more people.
Uh, definitely, and I'd just like to say that some, some of your concerns about, you know, the amphitheater, the huge Meyer Garden-esque a concert venue was brought up at the DDA meeting as well. And one thing that I mentioned about the pavilion or band shell being right sized. Um, this isn't a space that is gonna say, oh, we're, you know, this is the newest, you know, crazy kind of weekend, you know, music's glaring till whenever. This is gonna be right sized so that it fits the scale. And it's mostly going to be able to better facilitate the activities that already happen in the space. Um, and, and complement them versus, okay, now we've got a problem because everyone wants to use it. And there's cars parking all over the field and, and those types of things. Um, so it's not meant to create a problem, but your point's very well taken. And, and when we get into the design of the pavilion, um, you know, right sizing it and making sure that it fits, um, the space, uh, and doesn't, you know, overwhelm is gonna be, um, key, so.
We will be watching.
Good.
I, I, um, I have some concerns with the band shell, uh, part of this, you know, we have residential homes just a hundred feet away. This was not a popular part of this expansion. So I think with the parking and with the residential right there, we really need to watch what's going on with that. And I know the, the strategic plan didn't bring this thing up very high at all as a need.
So the original, when I, two and a half, two years ago, when I started as supervisor, the previous DDA director, the first time I met with her, brought in, um, a real elaborate plan that would be funded by the DDA that included and was very excited about, um, this, this exact space. And they called it a gathering space and it had a, the amphitheater, uh, skate park, climbing wall. There was more cement, trendy, busy, no, just didn't take into account additional parking, but just a much different plan. And that, I know there was a few people that especially, uh, that's DDA director that loved that project and wanted it, but it didn't have the, at least it didn't have support. So for eight years it sat there and it didn't go anywhere. And she was hoping that I would push it through. And I was thinking, this is the wrong space and it's crowded and it's, you know, it, it doesn't complement the library. So I didn't support pushing it through. I didn't want it as a resident in that form. It was such a, so then all of a sudden, there was a meeting with the library and the friends of the library on their own after saving up, what? Two hundred plus thousand dollars from libraries, you know, from book sales on their own. So that was what was hanging out. And when I thought gathering space, I thought no, because that's that terrible DDA cement pipe dream. Then the friends group on their own had come up and, and found this, you know, native edge that it was an entirely different concept that was more focused on an extension of what the library is. So you can say gathering space, but it was totally different. And it was, you know, it focused on native landscaping. It, it took into account all ages. And I think one of the cool things was it took into account, um, it was just really clever, all different age groups, but also calming, right? It wasn't like forced amphitheater. And then we had internally that same, you know, staff member who, the, the friends of library was clear, they did not want the amphitheater. That got pushed back in at staff level as well as separate bathrooms that are incredibly expensive that would hardly, you know, so that was taken out. I just wanna say thank you to the friends group and to you guys for just, it was just such a pleasant surprise. So I think this'll have, unlike the other original plan that just sat there for eight years and didn't go anywhere because it wasn't a great plan. This just has a, it's so clever, unique and calming. So it was just, thank you, because I know that you have put a lot of work into it. And I know that this plan, unlike the others, has the majority, has the support of the parks committee. I mean, it, it has universal support. And also much lower maintenance costs all around. It was just extremely intelligent and I think it'll be well received.
That's how I feel after previously being on the parks committee. Um, just hearing a lot of it too, when we talk about parking other than the amphitheater, whatever you wanna call it now. Um, the majority of the space is really for current users of the library to extend their usage of the library outside. It's not about, you know, as much as people coming here is more of a destination, it really is to ex, you know, make it a better indoor and outdoor library calming space, which really.
And it takes into account the rain, uh, you know, rain issues with the drainage pond that's there. It just works with the existing space. And I think it's just fantastic. And I know our parks committee is really excited about it. And also the projects that you've done at Calvin and other places, I don't think you're gonna have trouble, especially with the new parks director starting May first. Uh, and the creation of hopefully of a friends group. I don't think you're gonna have trouble finding volunteers.
No, no, really. And I think people will use it as a, as a, a space to come and, and learn and, um, even you'll want to take care of it. You've got a lot of people like the wild ones who they, they seek these places out. So no, I, I, I agree. Thank you for that feedback, um, and, and just, you know, again, addressing your comment about the band shell. Um, it, it, I think right sizing is what we're really focused on here. And I don't want people to get hung up on band shell. It was really, when we talked about the community hub and, and kind of seeing the level, uh, that people had the, the vision that other people not, you know, not even myself and Lulu, but we're kind of expecting of this space. In the original plan, it, we were thinking of a pretty modest pavilion you might find in any park. And we were thinking, okay, well, with the feedback that we're getting, we wanna take this a step above that. So a nicer looking feature, um, more of an anchor for the space. Um, but, but not anything that is gonna be, uh, some type of a nuisance. Really, it's gonna be complimentary. Um, and, you know, so we won't mount gigantic speakers on it or anything like that.
One thing that had come up at the DDA meeting, uh, one of the members, uh, the resident member had the idea, and I, I think it was well received. Um, that corner park kitty corner from Tuffy that was redone, I don't know, several, a while ago. Um, with a real kind of modern design and it's got some really expensive, um, sculptures and also benches that were imported from Spain apparently, that really is, now it's a memorial park, you know, for our veterans. And it also sits next to the old township hall. And it just doesn't see the use, especially because it's kids, right? So it's an active sculpture kind of oriented towards kids. So someone had the idea of taking those, which we own, costs a lot of money and don't get a lot of use, moving that up and incorporating it into the space around the library. And then we can kind of focus on maybe, you know, something simple and more timeless next to the old township hall. And I think that was pretty well received.
Yeah. Um, I, just, I, we remember that comment and I went and, um, looked at those, uh, benches today. And I mean, they'll, they'll be perfect out here. And that's another way that we can, um, you know, save on budget or help to make sure that we're, um, you know, kind of reducing costs where we can. I, but I think that they're great and they're gonna be, make a great addition to, uh, to this space.
Thanks for using those.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to. They're fantastic.
What, what are, we are actually approving tonight then? We're, we're not approving the whole design. Uh, we don't know what the pavilion's gonna look like. We're, uh, approving the concept to support the DDA and we're gonna get a chance to see the final plan before it's constructed.
Yes.
Yes.
Ben might have some more insight related to what the township process looks like.
So the downtown development authority has actually recommended committing a million dollars of DDA funding towards this project. Uh, typically, just like all of our other budgeting processes, it's a recommendation from the DDA. The township board actually needs to, uh, consider that recommendation. So the hope is that the action out of here will be, uh, to confirm the DDA's, uh, contribution to the project.
Trustee McDonald.
Grace, I just wanna say that I couldn't agree with you more that this is a superior plan. It's really well thought out and it augments the library so well. And it brings that public space concept and, and it expands the usability of the library, kids programs. I mean, it's just a natural extension of library and a pavilion. I, I think the term pavilion works better. I mean, yes, we don't want a massive amphitheater. I think this is a much better design. I think the parks committee, the DDA is all on board. And I think you've done a great job of finding the right balance, which is what we really needed, because I think you're right, Grace. The, the, the prior plan from eight years ago was pretty cool, but it was just over the top. And, and this is just kind of fits in and it, it fits in with what the, a library spirit is about. And I can see other, you know, organizations wanting to utilize the library and utilize this space a lot. And not just for the kids programs. I mean, I think it'll be used that, for that very heavily. And Fourth of July, but all through the year it'll be used, so. And I think widening the sidewalks to make it accessible in the winter is a really good idea because, you know, we're a four season location, so.
Exactly.
When the friends group put out the bids originally, do you wanna touch on real quick some of the variations that you received?
Oh, we're, a couple of the bits we got back were fifteen million dollars. And I think that was Wes's first time hearing that last week at the DDA meeting.
He should have gone higher.
But we were getting back some ridiculous bids for what we wanted to kind of be a smaller guarding community hub space. There was also really great feedback, um, at that meeting last week. There was a resident that showed up who was sharing some of KDL stats. And in a way, it was really nice to hear, but also I was able to address some of the things that the board has been able to do. So first she talked about, well, we're investing in the outdoor space, but we're not investing in the interior space. And I was able to say, the board actually approved that we can start moving forward with getting an architect to start looking at the interior space. So that felt really amazing. Um, but when it came to the outdoor space, she started quoting the stats, which is, we have five thou, or ten thousand active cardholders and there are twenty thousand-ish residents in Cascade. And she said, sir, you're telling me eight people or they're showing up eight times a year into this space? This is one of the most active spaces in our community. And I know the amazing things that we're currently able to do because of friend's support, because of the support of the township staff and because of having a really great building and staff that love what they do. Um, they go above and beyond to make sure that whatever people need when they're coming in, we're trying our best to meet those needs. We recently had a program, um, for kids during spring break called a dino dig. And that had six hundred people showing up during a tornado warning. And so what we are doing here is special.
Those moms must have been really ready to get out.
And I had to ask a couple of staff members who were here for, they've been here for fifteen plus years. They said, is this normal that people still show up? And they said, yeah, the Cascade moms, they're gonna show up. They don't want their kids to miss out on the great programs that are being offered at this branch. So that was just another moment where we realized people are really enjoying not only the programs, but the services that we're offering at this branch. And as, um, my boss Jennifer spoke to last week at the DDA meeting, this is not, what we do at Cascade is not something that's happening at all of the cast, or at, at all of the KDL branches. It's unique to Cascade because of the support that we have from the friends and because of the staffing that I have in this building. So I'm really excited about this project. Um, we are hoping that we can get approval to accept the support of the DDA. But we will have to come back, um, to all of you once we get the rest of the design, um, buttoned up and to get your final approval around things like the pavilion and the areas around the library.
How many DDA meetings have you been to at DDA board? I just noticed you've been patient and not pushing the process at all.
I have lost count, but I've also really enjoyed it because at my heart, it's really important that we're not just doing things on the library lens. This is for the community. And so I really wanna make sure that we have long-term partnerships with the DDA, with the parks committee. Because I don't want this to end with, when Lulu's here at KDL, it needs to be something that outlasts me, so.
The previous plan I think was over two million and this one at one million isn't cheap, but it's heck of a lot better than two, so. Thank you, trustee Shipley.
I think it's very interesting. I think that we should support.
I think it's very interesting, I think that we should support. The DDA and the Township, one of the things that was identified is a DDA wants more walkability in the area. And this would probably add to it and keep people in the area, or they might go down to the ice cream joint on Cascade Road when they're done up here or vice versa. So, I like the idea of DDA funding it, which like what they've picked up a lot of the bus line.
You like both?
No, no, I like the decision that DDA has made.
I, I, I moved to approve the DDA support of the library outdoor gardens and activity space as.
Shipley supports.
The motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Shipley to approve, um, the DDA's willingness to support the library outdoor space. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you both for coming tonight.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item zero four two, twenty twenty-three, establishment and appointment of a Township Manager Search Committee. Uh, as the board is aware, the board needs to commence a manager transition process. Uh, given some news we received on Friday, and I apologize for the amendment to this later, but we didn't know until Friday, so. As I noted in the memorandum, that I, I recommend the establishment of a manager search committee. Consisting of the supervisor, the treasurer, and one trustee, with, uh, the Township Human Resources Director providing administrative support. The search committee will help this entire board as it undertakes the transition process. As I noted in the memo, the Township has a variety of significant projects and initiatives going on right now. And a smooth and expeditious transition process is important. To fill this or to appointments to this committee, I would make the following, uh, the supervisor, Grace Lusprance, treasurer. Wendy Corstage, and trustee Timmy Nordhook. Trustee Corstage has extensive experience at the executive level, in the private sector hiring. And also trustee Nordhook has experience with this exact same selection process for municipal managers from his time as a trustee in Caledonia. There are a variety of transition issues and tasks that the board will have to address. This is just the first step to establish, or the first step in establishing the search committee. And I anticipate that the committee will meet. As soon as possible, and also that it would may have to have a series of special board meetings, there are motion or discussion.
Make a motion to create the manager search committee and appointees as stated.
Support.
That's a motion by, uh, Treasurer Corstage, supported by trustee.
Both.
Both McDonald and, uh, trustees Nordhook and McDonald. Um, is there a discussion?
The only thing I would say is, um, this is. Having done it before when we had to replace Jake Havens, and then again. When we replaced, uh, Bill Cousins, this is gonna take. Longer than I think you, you may realize, it, it's a process. Um, we used an outside firm for when we replaced, uh, Jay. And got Bill, and we use a Mi- Michigan Municipal League as a, a resource, but. The interviewing process, uh, that we went through was quite, uh, lengthy, and it's hard to find a qualified candidate. So, one of the things I had written, uh, about this is the committee. Uh, is probably gonna have to consider sooner than later, uh, the appointment of an interim manager, because we will. Accomplish this in the time that Ben will be here, um, so, um. I, I would volunteer to be a resource, uh, to you, uh, cuz I've been through it twice before. As a gentleman said, we've only had, uh, three managers in thirty-six years, and I've worked for all of them, so. It's a, it's a, it, it's an important committee, but it's gonna take longer than I think you think it's gonna take.
No, I think you're right, I'm anticipating that as well. Trustee Shipley.
Oh, and Jim brought up a good point about an interim manager. You know, over the past several years, we've been fortunate in hiring. A lot of good, quality, talented people into the full-time staff up there. And, uh, I haven't asked Ben this yet, but. Is there, would it make sense to utilize our expertise and our staff? We've got a deputy treasurer up there that does an outstanding job, a deputy clerk that does an outstanding job. We got an engineer, Eric, who seems to be just a whirlwind of en- energy, we got Brian. Do we need to appoint a interim manager, or can we go with the talents? And, and energy that we already have selected in those seats up at Township Hall, just something for you to think about.
All great points.
Because they all seem to be willing to, I haven't talked to anybody, but they all seem to be willing to. Pick up the ball wherever needed and, and run down the field with it.
And manager Swayze has been very gracious and, you know, more than willing to help in the transition. Before he moves to the county and helps us get some parks, still partnering with them.
That's for the committee and, and outgoing manager to make a determination and bring it back to the board.
And, and to follow up on what John said. I think somebody like Brian, who's been here for quite a while. Would be of help to the committee too, because. It's not only they, the manager has to be a good fit with the employees, as well as how he fits with the board. So, I think the, the, although, um, we're approving the appointment of the committee, I think the committee ought to look at. Having staff be involved and, and see what they feel they need from a staff standpoint. As this gentleman said earlier, or perhaps you can't make it too big, because. We're gonna wanna be involved in the selection process too, but maybe one citizen. I don't know, it's up to you, but it's a good suggestion.
Um, I just have one more thing to add to, in addition to what you both have said. Um, in addition to looking at an interim manager, I think one other thing that this committee needs to look at and possibly, well, and. Maybe bring back to the board is the potential for some sort of financial consultant as well. Um, I think that we have a very small accounts payable department within the Township. And I think, um, Ben has a lot up here that he knows, um. And in addition to that, just reviewing previous board meeting minutes with the forensic audit, there was some specific. Um, financial controls that were specified, that they recommended be implemented within the Township. Um, and just to have, we might possibly need a financial consultant that comes in to see where we're at with those financial controls. Um, and to have somebody interim that maybe, you know, does the accounts payable side of things that I know Ben is. Um, you know, knows in and out right now, and I think that's another, another empty hole that. Needs to be filled in the interim.
Yeah, and you saw from my note, and I did a lot of research on firms that do. Yeah, that, that are specialized in looking for municipality, um, executives. And they're good firms, they have a process, they look at what our needs are. They establish criteria and qualifications for these people, and they have access. To people across the state, and there are three or four who are Michigan-based companies, um, that are really, really good, and the, and the Michigan Municipal League. Also already has a list of potential interim managers if we wanna hire an interim manager, and I think.
I don't think those have been vetted at all, though.
No, no, well, they may have been by them.
No, they have a disclosure on their statement, because I looked, that they ha- they're not making any guarantees or recommendations, they are just.
But it's, but there are some good people in that we could do due diligence on.
Yes.
Uh, because I believe that one of them on the list has been a, a, a CD manager, uh, in the area here. So he's very experienced, and I believe he's a Cascade resident, so the point is there, these. There might be, yeah. But the, 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 those, some of those firms have, have a process. They establish qualifications, they really work with us to find out what our requirements are, and that's why I think we should at least be talking with them, because. They do this for a living, and, and they're good, and we don't. So, that, that's just why I put the research out there, five or six firms, and sent that in order to everybody.
Thank you. Discussion? Got a motion on the table? Uh, I'm sorry, are you giving me?
No, that is gonna say, and support.
Oh, but, uh, motion by Treasurer Corstage, supported by. Trustee, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Nordhook, uh, or trustee McDonald. To approve the creation of the search committee and also the appointment as stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item. On the agenda. Will be done in closed session, this is Article ten, uh. We've been working closely with the Kent County Sheriff's Department over the past, say, year, more than a year. And also our legal counsel to address some serious public safety issues. That, uh, keep happening near Twenty-Eighth Street and the I ninety-six interchange. Specifically, uh, there are two, one happens to deal with the disproportionate amount of crime. That keeps happening at several hotels in that area. And then secondly, the, um, homeless encampments under and around the overpass that popped up, uh, during last year's warmer weather. Uh, we have our general counsel, legal counsel from Foster Swift, Attorney Homier here this evening. To discuss two potential remedies before it gets warm out, and. Just the sooner the better, which would give the Township, uh, one, the authority to ticket and remove those homeless encampments. Um, without having to wait or rely on MDOT. And then two, uh, the possibility of recouping, similar to what we talked about earlier, but recouping some of the public safety costs. Fire and police, um, incurred from having to go out to several of those same businesses. Um, who have been taking up a disproportionate amount of public safety dollars, so. Uh, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Shipley makes motion to go with closed section.
Support.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by Treasurer Corstage to enter closed session to discuss a matter exempt from the Open Meetings Act. Pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight subcession, or subsection, excuse me, eight. H, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, it needs to be a roll call.
Thank you.
Trustee Nordick?
Yes.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yay.
Supervisor Lusprance?
Yes.
Treasurer Corstage?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald, yes.
Motion carried, we are now in closed session, um, we don't know exactly how long it will take, but when we return, we'll have another opportunity for public comments, so we hope you'll.
Shipley makes a motion to re-enter normal session.
Support.
So, motion to re-enter regular session made by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, all in favor.
Hi.
Post, motion carried. We are now back in regular session, Article 11. We have none, nothing on the discussion agenda, so we'll move on to public comments. Anything, whether it's on the agenda tonight or not.
Hi, Anne England, thirty-four fifteen Glen Stone Court. I know you're not going to miss this, Ben. Do you have any updates?
So, we did get our opinion letter from our attorney. Mr. Homier was nice enough to reach that as we anticipated. There's lots of things for us to consider in there, but we are, will be moving through that process. And when we can, in a public meeting, would certainly give you an update, but at this point, that's protected for reasons that we can all probably imagine. And then as far as the ticket is going, I haven't gotten an update from Madison lately, but I know that they're still going through that process. And I would still encourage you to reach out to her if there's any issues and we'll follow up again with Eagle after May tenth, which is their layer planting date.
So, just something to think about with that follow-up, because I think the majority of these problems started the last couple of years when all that clear cutting was done. I think that's where we're getting the lights and, you know, the sounds and those things. Is there a way for the township, either on its own or in conjunction with Eagle, to make those natural berry barrier areas? Put those back in place as part of maybe whatever restoration or whatever is being done in terms of follow-up with the cleanup and whatever else is involved with that. I'm not really, I don't really know that much about that, but it just seems like if that could be done and those natural barriers put back up where we weren't seeing and hearing all that before, I feel like a lot of this would go away for everybody.
Yeah.
And I feel like a lot of the neighbors feel like that too, like if all those trees, which cannot be done on our side, the height differential is too great. But if something like that could be achieved, I think it would, I think it would solve a lot of problems.
I don't think Eagle, I don't think Eagle is an avenue for that. Truth be told, I think that they're actually allowed to cut down those trees just based on the Eagle regulations. But it's certainly something that we can consider in our internal conversations about what our next steps are going to be.
Okay, that sounds good. This seems like it'd be kind of an easy fix if there was some way to mechanism to sort that out. So, all right. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Bargain chip.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boujack, welcome.
Good evening, Walter Boujack, sixty-six thirty-nine, Thorn Apple River Drive, Alto, Michigan, four-nine-three-oh-two. I am your Kent County Commissioner for District Twenty-One. I'd like to begin by, first of all, thanking all the board of trustees for what you do in your service to Cascade Township, very much, very much appreciated. And I did want to comment to Mr. Ben Swayze. I've met him on August fifth of twenty-twenty-two at my very first PFOS meeting, and he has been a consummate professional and very helpful to me as a commissioner. Every time I've emailed him, he's quick to respond. And every time I've asked him for information, he has provided information that I've asked for. So, Mr. Ben, thank you very much for the treatment that you've given me, and I very much appreciate that. And good luck. And I'd like to say to our new treasurer, welcome to the board. I believe, are you still serving on the planning commission also? No, so you got to step down from the planning commission? Thank you for your service at the planning commission and having had a chance to meet you here in the board meeting room. It was very nice. And now I see you here hard at work as a trustee and to you, I also wish you well in your efforts as a trustee. I'm sure you'll do your best. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes, welcome.
Good evening. Jeff Hughes, seven-two-five-zero, Redbud Lane. If the board will indulge me tonight, I'd like to take its temperature. At the last meeting, there were ten people who spoke all about the deer and all expressing concerns about the deer. I know that the township over the last year at least has received a lot of letters as well. And to the best of my knowledge, none of those letters were against, or were saying that there wasn't a problem with the deer or that nothing should be done even if there is a problem, and certainly none of the ten people here were of that opinion. The board itself is aware up at Burton Park that it is being decimated by the deer, both on the short term, because the deer contribute to the elimination of the native species and the invasion of the exotic plant species. Likewise, it is a long-term problem, and that is it is killing all the saplings. And as a consequence, the long-term growth or the long-term forests there is endangered. The board also has now Dr. Key's report, and by his own admission, it's limited. It's not his fault. It's just simply because of the constraints placed upon him in doing that report. But one thing is clear is that he did identify a lot of bucks passing through just a small area of what I would call the Burton Park Township or Burton Park neighborhoods. And if there's a lot of bucks, there's a lot more does. He has much said that as well, based upon his estimates. So, my question is, has the board at this point at least reached a consensus that there's a problem that needs to be addressed?
So, all public, you can, I don't want to interrupt you, but so board deliberations and decisions always happen at these meetings. So, there's no, because it has to be public, right?
Yeah, and that I was a rhetorical question.
Oh, God, sorry.
So, it would seem to me then is that the board has enough information. There, it's been well over a year since the last public discussion about the deer, that there should be another discussion. There's more than enough justification, it seems to me, and I think that the board has to move with some alacrity. Because one thing that also came from Dr. Key's report was that it's typical, if you're going to do another survey, and I sincerely believe that another survey is necessary to answer the questions that Dr. Key's could not answer. Are there too many deer? And if there are, how many should be taken care of in order to reach a consensus within the community? That survey's got to be done. May I have some additional time, please? That survey typically is done in August until December. So, there really isn't a lot of time, if there's another survey to be taken, in order to find is the appropriate consultant to organize a survey or however it's going to be done. It's, that's, by my calculation, that's three, four months. And knowing how the township operates through committees, that's not a lot of time. So, I think that we can't just simply talk about the problem anymore, at least from the public bringing this to the board's attention. I think the board does have to have discussion, has to make some type of decision, whether to go forward or not or to say, there's not a problem. And frankly, I don't think it's going to do that, but it's got to make a decision here so we can move forward and figure out how to address it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would any of our Zoom participants like to participate in this public comment section? Please raise your hand. None would like to speak.
Okay. Manager comments.
So, you guys will be stuck with me for one more meeting, so I'll save all the mushy stuff for that meeting. But I did want to let you know that I am willing to do anything that you guys ask of me in the transition. Certainly willing to help after I leave. You know, ICE was served well by the former manager for probably a year and a half after I was here, just answering questions. So, I'll always be a resource for you. We've talked about ten years about getting some county parks resources in Cascade Township and happy to say that you guys won't get rid of me yet. I'll be talking to you about other stuff and will be an advocate for the county on that end, so.
Most likely you'll be back, right?
Exactly. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was put out there and thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for your willingness to make the transition as smooth as possible. We really appreciate it. Board comments.
As I always do, stand up and thank you folks for staying tonight. Appreciate all your input. Library, Lowe's library, just want to make sure that it's done right. It's been identified as one of the features of Cascade that the residents like. Mr. Hughes, we got a new Parks Director coming on who also has experience in deer herd management from out of Ottawa County. And that's what we're counting on. And also, we hope to, by our actions tonight, make it easier for the township businesses to stay in business. So, thanks for all.
Well, I've got a few comments on deer. Sorry. Mr. Hughes knows that I've been doing my research for quite a while. I've sent him several articles. I've read Dr. Key's report. I have been an avid bow hunter for many, many years. Of course, I haven't done it recently, but Kent County has had a deer overpopulation for decades, and the report that Dr. Key's put together is more that we're a corridor of deer going through to other townships, other cities, even Kelvin College was mentioned. So, our efforts are really helping everybody else. I guess if we're going to put a program together, I'd like all of those entities to be involved in it as well. I really think Kent County should be involved in it. You have to do more than just Cascade Township. I took a lot of heat for wanting three hunting units in the park. We did it. We put almost forty hunters in there in that last season. I took heat for saying doe only, because that's how you thin a herd. You don't thin a herd by taking bucks. Nobody took a deer. So, if there's this abundance of deer in there, I would think one of these hunters would have got one. It's, if you read state records, thirty deer per square mile, thirty-five deer per square mile is pretty much average in the state. So, they're eating, they're not starving. They're eating good. But I have to bring it back to what, we're not standing in the way. If anybody wants to shoot deer, shoot them. If the state says you can do it, we don't stand in the way. We don't have an ordinance saying you can't do it. So, I hear neighborhood associations say, not here. I'd like to see those neighborhood associations get out of their own way and shoot their deer. If you're not a hunter, pick up the sport in your neighborhood. Get with your neighbors. I know another Caledonia person that uses an electric fence around their landscaping in their yard. We're not standing in the way of an electric fence. I was over here at the nursery on Butrick and Twenty-Eighth getting bark, and they have this deer pearl that they protect all their nursery stock with over the winter. So, I guess what I'm saying is we can't do it all. You have to do something to help yourself. So, open up your areas to hunting. Ask if anybody in the township wants deer shot, give us your address. We'll pass it on to hunters. But I need real hunters to go in that park and get them. If there's that many deer, we got to get them out of there, and hunting is the way to do it. So, I asked even for signs on Cascade Road and Butrick, deer crossing. I took heat for that. I'm just saying, we gotta, it's a multi-pronged approach. We have to try several different things, but the residents have to be involved in it too. So, I guess that's all I'm saying is shoot them. We're not standing in the way. But I'm certainly not in favor of hiring somebody to shoot deer in the middle of the night. And if the associations won't let us hunt in there, I really don't think they're going to be open to the idea of somebody dressed in black with night vision at two o'clock in the morning shooting deer in your neighborhood. So, I just say there's more to this than, hey township, shoot the deer. So, we got to get together and figure that out. Thank you.
I wanted to thank Commander Swayze. You have a very difficult, thankless job because you not only hear from residents, you hear from the board, staff, you're just in a really tough spot, having to please a lot of people. And you have always been professional, and I I just want to acknowledge that I think you've had a tough, tough manager position is tough alone, but Cascade Township has had a transition over the past two years with the board and which would be difficult for even, you know, anyone to handle, and I I certainly haven't I certainly came off as new at times, so I appreciate all that you've done and I look forward to working with you at the county level. And I don't think anyone who knows what you do on a daily basis would question your move at all. I think you deserve it. So, thanks for putting up with so much and so So thanks for putting up with so much at so many different angles, and I'm glad that you're not going far.
Thank you. That means a lot to me.
Appreciate it. Their motion?
I'll make a motion since the business of this board is completed that we adjourn.
All in favor and supported? The motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. We are adjourned. Thank you.